Good morning. Before we get started, I would ask everyone to please turn off cellphones and/or to turn them to the silent feature. This hearing is being streamed live on YouTube. Now, I would ask all those who come forward to speak to an application today to use the microphone, provided to ensure that all the discussions can be clearly heard. We acknowledge the land that we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, Yanichnabe, the Chipwah, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto was covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the Credit. In accordance with Sections 45 and 53 of the Planning Act 1990, as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for: variances from the provisions of the zoning bylaw that apply to property, permission to extend or alter lawful nonconforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. Now, anyone in attendance today who wants to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must complete a decision request form. These forms are available at the hearing room at the end of the horseshoe. Please ensure that you include your email address on this form because the T-Lab, the Toronto Local Appeal Board, will be sending notifications and email updates by email. Once completed, please give the card to committee staff before you speak, or leave in the black box at the end of the row where the staff are seated. You may not agree with the decision of the committee. Decisions may be appealed to the Toronto Local Appeal Body, T-Lab, or in some circumstances to the local planning appeal tribunal. Appeal institute instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. To ensure a fair and timely hearing, I will vet the agenda to determine which applications can be dealt with immediately and which applications have individuals present other than the applicant or the agent who wish to address the committee. I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda, and I will ask for individuals to identify themselves. Now, if there are people in interest, present, the matter will be held until all the non-contested applications have been dealt with. If an item is held, we strongly encourage the applicant or agent to meet with the interested parties outside the hearing room to discuss and/or resolve the issues or concerns. If no person is present in interest, the item will be called in order of the agenda for non-contested applications. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant will proceed with their presentation if required by committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into the committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are approaching your five-minute mark. When addressing the committee, please come forward to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. If you have a written submission from which you read, please hand it to the Deputy Secretary Treasurer when you are finished. The applicant or agent will proceed first and will make a presentation to the committee of the application. Please note that the committee may not entertain extensive revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application if substantially revised, to ensure the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes. Then, people in interest, either in support of or opposed to the application, will be invited to speak. If there are several speakers sharing the same view, please select a spokesperson to present the group's opinion. We want to hear your views, however, covering the same points is not required, and it will not advance your cause. Now, committee members may ask questions of each speaker. When all the speakers are finished, the applicant or agent has an opportunity to rebut. However, only those issues which were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion. The application will then be taken into committee for a decision. Okay, Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, have the chair and committee members confirmed the minutes from the last public hearing?
Yes, they have.
Okay, then I'll ask for a motion from our committee to adopt those minutes, please.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I move a motion to adopt the minutes from the last meeting.
Motion by Ms. Oomen, second. Second by Ms. Cheng. Second by Ms. Cheng. All those in favor. Motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, are there any files to be closed?
Not in this time slot.
Thank you. Are there any applicants who wish to withdraw their application? And are there any applicants who wish to defer an application? Okay. In that case, I will now vet the agenda. First, from committee, may I ask, are there on committee any declarations of interest for the morning session?
Yes, I do have one, Item 8. I declare a bunch of interests because I'm a resident in the area, and decisions might affect me personally, and I wanted to declare a couple of names.
Thank you. We'll now proceed to the vetting of the agenda. In this case, I'll read out the number of the application, the address, and I'll ask the applicant or the agent to identify themselves by holding up their hand, and then I'll ask if there's anyone present in interest who wishes to speak to that application. So, application number one, 630 Euclid Avenue. Applicant, thank you. Anyone in interest here this morning? Application number two, 58 Tiago Avenue. Applicant, please, thank you. Anyone in interest to speak to that application? Application number three, 36 St. Paul Street. Thank you. Anyone in interest? Application four, 40 to 58 Widmer. Thank you. Anyone in interest on that one? Number four. Number five, 539 Gladstone Avenue. Applicant, thank you. Anyone in interest on number five? Number six, 404 Delaware Ave. Applicant is present, thank you. Anyone in interest? Application number seven, 193 Clendenon Avenue. Applicant, thank you. Anyone in interest? Number eight, 307 Augusta Avenue. Here's the applicant. Anyone in interest on that to speak for or against? 307 Augusta, anyone to speak for or against? Hearing none, I'll move on to the application number nine, 10 King College Road. Applicant, thank you. Anyone in interest? Application number 10, 363 Crawford Street. Applicant, thanks. Anyone to speak in interest?
Yes.
Yes, I see hands there. So, number 10, 363 Crawford will be held down, and I would strongly recommend that the applicant and those present to speak to that application take the opportunity to have a discussion outside the hearing room, hopefully to clarify or resolve issues. Application number 11, 801 Dundas West. Applicant, thank you. Anyone present?
No.
In interest?
No, he's talking to that one.
There is interest here?
I think he was waving to somebody. Yeah, that's what I did.
Okay. All right, the number 12, 71 Ravina Crescent. Applicant, please. Applicant, thank you. Anyone in interest on that one?
No.
Number 13, 206 Hiawatha. Applicant, thank you. Anyone in interest?
Oh, yeah.
There we are. That's okay. So, application number 13, 206 Hiawatha, will be held down, and again, I would strongly recommend that the applicant and those present in interest take the opportunity for a discussion outside. Application 14, 826 to 834 Young Street and 228 Cumberland. Applicant is here, thank you. Anyone in interest on that application?
No.
Application number 15, 943 to 945 Dundas West. Thank you. Anyone in interest? Number 16, 38 St. Andrews Gardens. Applicant, thank you. Anyone in interest on that one? 17, 385 Carlton Street. Applicant, I see, thank you. Anyone to speak to that? Number 18, 2 Wetherell Street. Thank you. Anyone to speak to it? No. Number 19, 100 Niagara Street. 100 Niagara, thank you. Anyone to speak to 100 Niagara? Number 20, 686 Ozzington Avenue. Okay, applicant here, and anyone to speak to that? Anyone to speak to that one? No. So, 686, the applicant present, thank you. And that does our first 930 group of applications. So, just to review, the applications that are held are numbers 10, 363 Crawford Street, and number 13, 206 Hiawatha. We will now proceed through the uncontested applications in the numerical order on the agenda. So, we'll be starting with 630 Euclid Avenue. Could the applicant come forward, please, to the microphone? Good morning.
Good morning, committee. My name is James Trent, and I'm the agent for the property at 630 Euclid Avenue.
Thank you very, very much. Do members of committee? Oh, yes. We have before us, on this application, just a moment, please, on this application, a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, correspondence from the agent dated 11 September, and correspondence in opposition from one party. So, I'll ask the committee on this one if we'd like a presentation or if we'd like to go straight to questions.
I don't need a presentation, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We can go straight to questions, and I do have one for the applicant. If I could ask you, what is the garage used for?
Will be used back as a garage presently. They have another unit there, but that's going to be evicted, going to convert back to a residential parking garage.
So, just to be clear, right now, it's being used as?
It's already gone now. Like, before, they used it for other purposes other than parking, but now it's going to revert back to parking.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Can you just confirm that several of these variances are existing conditions?
Yes, correct.
Okay. No more questions.
Right then. Any further questions of committee? No?
Just can I confirm, so, four apartments existing?
Correct.
Right, and you're looking to kind of normalize or legalize those?
That's correct.
Through these variances?
Correct.
And 10 bedrooms in total?
Yes.
Just curious, you said that the garage is already being converted back to a garage?
Yes.
You haven't shown any pictures that it's already done?
No, I don't have any picture here to show that, but that will be part of the type, if you committee tie that to the decision.
Okay, I can put that into condition. Okay.
I beg your pardon, we're going to put what?
The garage will be converted back to garage.
Right.
Because he has not shown any evidence in terms of photographs to say that it's already been done.
Well, yes.
And it's not part of this application. It will be a fifth unit.
We have the applicant's confirmation that the garage will be used for parking.
That's correct.
That's what the, so that's what the vote will be on.
We haven't, are we in committee?
We're not in committee yet. Have you any further questions?
No, I don't have a further question. I just wondered.
Well, I think, well, we'll take this into committee now, then.
Okay. Okay, through you, Mr. Chairman, I think that in terms of how this fits in the context of the neighborhood and meets the four tests, that it is a fit. There are numerous additions. In terms of what Ms. Yim mentioned, I think we could put a condition in stating that the garage cannot be used as habitable space, and that should cover her concern. So, if the committee is okay with that, then I would be prepared to move a motion to approve the application with that condition.
Yes, I would second that motion.
Okay, motion by Ms. Oomen, second by Ms. Cheng. All in favor? Sure, you have your approval.
Thank you.
Thank you. Application number 258 Tiago. Okay, we can stand that one down for a little while. Do you expect that person to hear shortly, or? You can keep a surprise, then. So, we'll stand number two down, waiting, pending arrival of a party. Let's carry on now with number two. Call. Okay, I'll ask the applicant, please, to come to the microphone. Good morning, Al. Well, just before we begin, the committee has before it on this application a copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations, and email correspondence from city planning received 10th of July. May I ask you to speak your name and address, please?
My name is Joe Battaglia, the architect, 1050 McNichol, Unit 14 in Scarborough.
Okay, now, I understand that a person has arrived with this particular application in mind.
Number three.
Number three. Okay. Pardon me, we're good on this one. Let's carry on. I'm sorry, did I interrupt you? If you'd state your name and address, please.
Oh, Joe Battaglia, architect, 1050 McNichol Avenue, Unit 14, Scarborough.
Thank you very much. All right. Committee members on this application, would you like a presentation, or could we go to questions?
We can go to questions, Mr. Chairman.
Let's go to questions, then. Questions of committee?
I don't have any.
I also have no questions.
Okay, then may I have a motion, please?
I will move a motion to approve with the proposal have to tie to the plan that the revised, with the revised joint. It's got a date on the revised joint, that's what.
That's just an email going back to July, that's not a condition, so I think we have the correct plan, so you don't need to tie it to plans.
Okay, so I revise my motion is to move, to approve this proposal.
Motion by Ms. Cheng, is there a second? Second by Mr. Reed. All those in favor?
Thank you.
You have your approval. Thank you. On the next application, which is 36 St. Paul, I'm advised that since we began, a party in interest has arrived, so 36 St. Paul will be held down and heard with the contested applications. Again, I suggest if you wish, that the person in interest meet with the applicant outside the hearing room for a discussion. We'll move to application number four, 40 to 58 Widmer Street. Applicant, thank you. The committee has before it on this application a copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, covering letter from the agent received 27 March, and site-specific bylaw 273 2016. Good morning.
Variances, I would say, would be the most substantive, and they are with respect to the proposed increase in GFA. The permitted is 27,200 square meters. This is obviously a tall building proposal, and the application is seeking an increase to 29,831, so it's less than a 10% increase, and there are two reasons for that. First off, the height of the building is not changing, the building envelope is not changing, the number of dwelling units are not in changing, are not changing as a result of this extra 2,000 and change square meters. The applicant has proposed to increase the unit sizes. The previous proposal didn't have any three-bedroom units, and the proposal will now have, actually 19% of the units will be three bedrooms. They've gone from 10 units, or sorry, from 11 units per floor down to 10 units per floor, and they have also decreased some of the floor-to-ceiling heights in the building, which has allowed some additional floors to be slid in. But the overall permitted height of the zoning bylaw is not being changed at all, and, as I say, the number of units in the building is not increasing. So, I'd say there was no impact whatsoever as a result of basically sliding in the additional floors within the permitted tower height and envelope. And that's variances one and two. And the balance of the variances are quite technical. Number three relates to the height of certain projections above the permitted rooftop height of the building. I'm just going to hold up if you can see from there. This is the roof-floor plan.
Perhaps you can put that on the overhead for us?
Oh, sure.
The roof-floor plan. This area here is a garbage chute overrun. A portion of it that is in, that I've highlighted in yellow, actually projects above the permitted height. The white portion is permitted, and that's because there's a break-in permitted building height along that dash line there in the bylaw. So, just because of the location within the structure of the building, that little bit of the garbage chute is over the permitted height.
By how much, please?
By 0.4 of a meter. It's allowed to be three meters tall, it's 3.4 meters tall. Similarly, there's a window washing equipment storage room. It is three meters tall, and it's for the platform and the mechanics of it to be stored interior instead of just being left lying out in the roof, which, and then again, that's three meters tall. We could have put it on that side of the building, for whatever reason, the architects have got it designed here adjacent to the staircase, and so that's the second projection on the roof. And the third one in that same variance has to do with architectural trellises. At the back of the building, where the ramp goes down to the underground garage, we've put a decorative architectural trellis above it, and it exceeds the permitted height. It's proposed to be 3.8 meters in height, whereas three meters is what's permitted, but it's.
These are okay. This is fine, thank you very much. I'm going to go to allow the members to bring their questions to you. I was confused on this one whether, on the number of stories issued, now you've explained that, that it's the same height?
It's the same metric height, exactly.
Or stories squeezed into the same height?
Yeah.
Questions from other panel members?
I have one question on the same point, variance number three. I'm just a little bit confused about the wording. Just now you explained the height exceeding the allowable height, but in the wording in the paragraph, everything is might or may exceed. Is it at that point you did not know how much it exceeds?
No, it's because I tracked the language out of the zoning bylaw, and the zoning bylaw says "may exceed."
Oh, I see.
That's just the language in the draft, in the approved bylaw.
Okay.
Other questions?
Just an observation. First of all, commendable in terms of increase in the number of three-bedroom apartments, given our current circumstances in downtown Toronto, I think that's actually quite laudable. And similarly, the number of bike parking spots, that's basically one per unit, it sounds like?
Yes, it is, which complies with the, the reason for that variance really has nothing to do with the number of bike parking spaces, but the old Toronto bylaw doesn't allow bikes in stackers.
Right.
And they are proposed in, some of them are proposed in stackers, so the variance is only to permit them to be stacked.
Which is more efficient.
More efficient, that's right.
Great, thank you.
Committee, if there are no further questions, I'll ask for a motion, please. I'll second it. Motion by Mr. Reed to approve, second by Mr. Clay. All those in favor?
Thank you.
You have your approval. Thank you. And we move to application number five, 539 Gladstone. And on this application, the committee has before it copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations, and a staff report from Urban Forestry with the recommendation on forestry condition number two. Good morning.
Good morning. Mr. Chairman, members of the committee.
My name is Nelson Spinola, and I'm here as the agent for this application.
Could you give us your address, please?
1726 St. Clair Avenue West.
Thank you, please proceed. I'll just ask the committee first, do we need a?
No, no.
A presentation on this, or can we go straight to questions? Or even a motion?
Questions.
Questions, go. Morning.
I just want to confirm that this is going to be used as a garage?
It is, yes.
Thanks.
Further questions? In that case, I'll look to committee for a motion, please. Motion by Mr. Reed to approve, is there a second?
I will second it.
Second by Ms. Chang. All those in favor?
Urban Forestry, number two.
With the condition, yeah.
Yeah.
Subject to forestry, condition number two. Thank you. So a motion by Mr. Reed, second by Ms. Chang. Is there, all those in favor? Sir, you have your approval.
Thank you.
Thank you. Application number six, 404 Delaware Ave. On this application, committee has before it copy plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and staff report from manager of development engineering, Toronto and East York Construction, and the acting supervisor, Urban Forestry. In terms of our correspondence, we have correspondence and opposition from one person. Good morning.
My name is Gordon Cumming, I'm the agent for this project, 27 Flora Parkway.
Thank you, please proceed. I'll just ask the committee first. Like a presentation on this, or would you care to go to questions? I think we'll go right to questions. So questions from committee?
Can you just confirm, like, variance number four and five, and one and two under the old bylaw, are those existing conditions?
Yes, I haven't increased the footprint of the house.
Okay. Those are my questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is, I have a question with respect to the FSI. At point 9.3, is that, is that in line with other properties in the area?
Yes, there are several properties with third-story additions on them. So it's not, and we stepped it back from the front. So it's not intrusive. And the height and everything is within the peaks of the two houses on either side.
Thank you very much. Further questions? Committee, look to committee for a motion in that case.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. As the applicant mentioned, there are a lot of other additions. There's lots, based on my research. It looks like the garage on the left, the left-hand side, is quite a bit larger. So I think that what's being proposed fits within the context of the neighborhood and meets the four tests. Therefore, I would move approval, including the engineering condition in the report dated June 3rd, as well as forestry number two.
Motion by Ms. Omen? Is there a second? Second by Mr. Clay. All those in favor? Sir, you have your approval. Thank you. Application number seven, 193 Clendenon Ave. The committee has before it on this application copy plan of survey and site plans, plus a staff report from Urban Forestry. Good morning.
My name's Tony Henriques. I'm the agent for this application, 543 Concord Avenue.
Thank you. Committee, does committee care for a presentation here? Or can we go to questions? Or straight to a motion?
Are these existing conditions, these variances? Or?
The, they're existing conditions. I actually spoke to Mr. Med Witsky this morning. He wrote his staff report, and basically I asked him, because there's no trees in front of the property, and he just said that there were no conditions for this application. So I don't know if he sent an email prior to that, or?
No.
But either way, I would be fine, because there, there really is nothing.
I don't see any forestry.
No.
Okay.
No question, I'd like to move a motion to approve this proposal.
Motion by Ms. Chang to approve. Second by Mr. Reed. All those in favor?
Thank you.
An animus support on that, and you have your approval, sir. Thank you. Move on now to application number eight, 307 Augusta Ave. Thank you.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning. May I ask you to state your name and address?
Yes, Edward Lee. I'm the architect and applicant for the application. I have the owner here with me, who would like to say a few words about this application. It's, I guess you have the previous decision. We were before you in 2017 for the same application. So I would like to have the few minutes to explain what has changed since 2017.
Can I, before you do that?
Yes.
Can I just ask you, the planning is asking us to refuse variance number one?
Yes, the planning report is the same.
And if that were the case, would that change variance number two? Or would you still need it? Perhaps when the owner's speaking, you could, can you just look at it?
Yes, sure.
And then answer that question when you come back? Thanks.
Thank you, okay. Then we'll hear from the owner now, then, please.
Okay, could I give one minute kind of background on the file? So.
Please go ahead with your presentation.
Okay, thank you. This is an existing cafe in Kensington Market. The rear yard of this business is beloved by Toronto. It's a well-known patio cafe. In 2017, I was engaged to try to get the patio officially recognized for purposes of applying for an application for liquor. And we were before you in 2017 with a variance for zero setback from a residential zone, because the property directly behind was in the process of being rezoned. So at that time in 2017, the committee approved our application with condition to limit the hours to 11:00 PM. The owner gambled and went to the OMB, appealing this decision specifically the condition for limiting the hours to 11:00 PM. At the time, it was still a residential zone, but there was a lot of documentation that it was in the process of rezoning. Obviously, the OMB had to side with planning's hours, and so he lost his OMB decision and lost the CVA decision as well. So fast forward two years, the rezoning of the rear property is now gone through, and it is now a CR-zoned property at the back. If you could just look to this. Just created this diagram. It's from the Toronto Property Maps website. So the red box is through 7 Augusta, the property. The rear patio is the back portion, abutting the large rectangular building to the east. The red line from the southeast corner of the red box to the green houses outlined, that is the actual physical distance to houses in a residential zone. The dashed green box is the property line. So because the garage corner, the northwest corner of the green box, is still within 30 meters of the patio, we still have a variance for distance to our zone under the new bylaw. And because of this, planning staff can't bend on that and ultimately are upholding the same conditions as we had in 2017.
Excuse me, one more. May I ask you?
Yes.
I know there's no microphone over there, but may I ask you to point out on the overhead this garage you're talking about in the northwest?
Yes.
It'll help us to understand.
So this corner here, so this garage here, is the closest structure on a residential line from the patio here.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. So I created this diagram just to illustrate that, yes, we are within 30 meters of a residential property line. But we are beyond 30 meters to residential building on the site. So the important thing to note for this application here is that what has changed since 2017 is we have gone from being zero meters setback from residential zone to now just under 13 meters to the property line. But we are over 30 meters to the houses. Mr. Luffey has many letters of support from neighbors. We have letters of support from those tenants on Oxford Street. And another thing I'd like to point out, all the buildings south of the red property, 307 Augusta and 305, are built out right to the back of the lot. So it's actually not an open rear yard condition from the patio to the residential zone. So this building is built out right to the end of the lot. Essentially, in order for sound to travel from here to here, you would actually have to go through, this building is completely built out. This building is completely built out. It's not too different than, if you look at the front condition on Augusta, there are a lot of patios that are open till 2:00 AM along that stretch. And it's Kensington Market, it's known to be a lively stretch of Augusta. And the owner has spent upwards of $15,000, being before you twice now, going to the OMB. He really feels strongly that this patio should not have limited hours. So I'd like to give him a minute to just characterize his business, and if acceptable.
Before we do?
Yes.
Do you hear from the owner? If I may make mention, that the committee does have before it letters, we have four letters of support.
Oh, okay. We submitted seven, but.
We have two letters in opposition, plus a staff report from community planning.
The community planning report, yes, I'm aware of the, it's essentially the same report from 2017. And the letters of support I submitted to, six in total. The objections must have come in last minute.
Very good, okay. And plus, we have from you, we have the OMB decision.
Yes.
And your correspondence from previously. So we'll hear now from the owner, please. Okay, and I'll ask the owner, to be brief, because we are at a five-minute mark here. So if you'd state your name and address, please.
My name's Puriya Luffey. I live at 307 Augusta Avenue. I actually live above the cafe. We've been there for roughly, I've lived there 10 years. The business has been in operation for nine years now. The patio has always been an integral part of all our business. And even after we got our liquor license, we've still, we're still using it for non-liquor purposes, or we've used it for private events, or on several summers, we've received extensions for the liquor license. I know the neighborhood well, I know my neighbors. I've been always very, very diligent in limiting noise. We, we don't project noise onto the patio. We have no amplified noise on the patio. If anything, it's more of a sanctuary from the hustle and bustle on the main street. People come there to get away from the sounds. And like I said, I do live there myself. So I'm very wary of any noise. I have neighbors who are, it's not quite clear on the map, but two doors north of me, they have a backyard as well. They gave letters of support. The amount of those high walls all around the back patio, there's, and maybe you can show some of the photos. There's so many trees there that I think it just muffles. There's one, that's a tree cover. It muffles any sound. And if you go, yeah, this one here, perhaps? This is from the back facing, looking in.
Sir, I'll just have to remind you that even though you've both taken the opportunity to speak, you're still limited by a five-minute, a five-minute time limit. And I've granted you seven and a half at this stage.
Okay.
So I'll ask you to conclude your remarks now, please.
Okay, just in conclusion, we have been very diligent in being mindful of our neighbors, and we will continue to do so if we do get the extension and hours.
Thank you very much. Okay, so thank you, sir. We're going to take this now into committee, I.
Questions?
We have some questions now for you. And we'll carry on with the questions from committee.
So your forgiveness is new to me. So can you just explain what is there now?
Right now, it's, it's as in the photo. It's informally set up as a patio. It's, I frequent this patio all the time. People have their coffees out there. It's a well-known sanctuary, as Mr. Luffey called it. It's just well-known as a very private patio, very quiet and calm oasis in the city, especially in Kensington Market. He has, he has been very good about making sure that the liquor license that he has for the inside never extends to the outside. And obviously, liquor enforcement always verifies that. So the application really is to legitimize a patio that's been there for a long time. And in turn, obviously, once we get a permit to legitimize the patio, the application to extend his liquor license outside could be granted.
So just to continue on that, so it is an existing patio. It's as you represent there.
Yes.
You want to legalize it, I guess, for lack of a better word.
Yes.
Right now, is it open until 2:00 AM?
It is, but he doesn't serve liquor out there. There's never any.
It's just that some of the, some of the opposition is about the hours and the noise.
Sure.
So.
Okay.
It operates now until 2:00 AM?
Yes.
And there's music playing outside?
Never outside, no.
No, okay. Is there, just one more question, Chair. Within the surrounding neighborhood, is this a common application? Do other cafes, bars have backyard?
Along this stretch of Augusta, I don't know of any others. I do know of another one that's forthcoming to committee in the future. All of them do have front patios open till 2:00 AM. And one of the support letters did point out that the noise emanating from a lot of these businesses on Augusta, even through the front, makes more noise than any noise they feel would ever emanate from this rear patio. The front patios are technically actually within 30 meters of that rear patio. Obviously, sound would have to travel through the buildings from the front to anybody at the back. There are really no residential dwellings in this area, except for those garages and the houses on Oxford Street that I highlighted with the green box. And obviously, if we were within 30 meters of a residential property line, planning staff would not have imposed any restrictions on the hours. I just feel that, even though it is within 30 meters of a property line, I feel that the actual homes are legitimately over 30 meters away. And given that the lots between the patio and these residential lots are built out to the rear property line, I find it hard to believe that sound emanating from this patio would interfere with their.
Quick question for you.
Yes.
So 30-meter square is permitted. About how many people on a busy Friday night, how many people would a 30-meter-square patio have capacity for?
I would say, capacity?
Capacity. No, the 30-meter which is permitted, how, capacity would be what?
Oh, be about 25.
25 people, so at 61 meters, about somewhere around 50 people.
Theoretically, yes. If committee have been by this business during the day, it's not that type of establishment, nor would it be that type of patio. And I know it's very characterizing, it is not something that committee can.
Well, the applicant is asking for extra, for the additional space, obviously intending to fill it with patrons.
Yes.
Okay, thank you on that.
I have, sorry, you want to? Okay, my question is, your client said he lives above the establishment. Are there not other, like, at-grade that have residential above?
Yes, there might be, but.
There is, there is residential.
Yes. I've, I've been before committee with noise concerns.
I'm just asking you, I don't need you to explain.
Oh, yes, yes. Most of the second floors are residential. They obviously have chosen to live in a CR zone.
That's fine, I just wanted you to answer that, thanks.
Can you explain what the large floorprint building is behind the property?
So it was zoned residential for a long time. It was an industrial kind of mechanic building. Reed, do you know what the?
It's the garage building for the budget.
If you're speaking, we need your mic.
It's the garage building for the budget rent-a-car on College. It goes all the way back.
Thank you.
Just one last question. So you've seen the letters from the local residents and business association?
No, this, Puriya was very diligent this week of making sure that he was getting letters from anybody.
I didn't receive any. I didn't receive any...
The Friends of Kensington Market?
Oh.
Okay. I actually know them. They didn't mention anything to me.
There is correspondence from the Friends of Kensington Market in opposition to the proposal.
They, I think they're from, I'm actually active with them. I think their position is that they will oppose any, as carte blanche, they'll oppose any applications for patios or liquor licenses. But they have had their meetings in the back patio, they've, I work with Friends of Kensington Market.
Okay.
And then there was also a letter from Kensington Market Action Committee in opposition. Can you comment on their position, why they would be opposing?
I think, I think it's the same thing. Last time we applied, they actually wrote a letter in support.
Okay.
There is, there is an issue with just, I think, there's been an issue with bars and restaurants in the area, and new bars and restaurants specifically. So I think, again, as a matter of carte blanche, they've been writing letters against any, any application. And just on the Kensington Market Action Committee, I was told they would write a letter of support a month ago, but I didn't, I didn't follow up with them.
Thank you very much, okay. If there are no further questions, then I think we'll take this item into committee now, and...
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I, I'm not really that concerned about the size. However, I do think that the, the other three conditions make sense in this area. I know that, yes, the applicant argues that there's structures around, but noise does hit that and go up and over. There are, in fact, people living above these commercial establishments along Kensington. I would be inclined to lean toward what was previously approved by the committee, which was to impose those conditions and allow the variance number one.
So, is that a motion?
I'm not, no, I'd like to hear from my...
You'll forgive me, I'm just trying desperately to understand this a little bit better. So what you're suggesting would be to allow the patio...
So the previous...
...legalized, in effect.
Yeah.
But have restrictions on hours of use?
Which is basically what committee approved the first time, before the applicant decided to go to the O M B. And I mean, I would like to add that I've heard the word, it's an oasis, it's a quiet place, so I find it somewhat contradictory with respect to the, the music playing, having hours, and for the use of the patio.
So right now, they can't use it for, get a liquor license, but allowing the patio to be legalized would allow them to get a liquor license?
Well, I think...
With restricted hours?
I believe the applicant has the liquor license, that he has no intention, he said, of serving alcohol out there, although I'm not, you know, whether he does or doesn't is, is not up to, up to me, but, or any of us.
Gotcha. Does the current liquor license, I'm sorry, I'm coming out of committee now for a question, but does that current liquor license permit you to serve liquor on the patio, existing or proposed?
No, not, not currently. The owner has obtained special occasion permits for special occasions, which extended the hours till 2:00 a.m.
Thank you, excuse me. Back into committee then, thank you.
So to that point, I'm just trying to understand, understand from a business perspective why it would be attractive to have a liquor license on the patio. If you, if, if we agreed to the patio, would they be able to get a liquor license but with restricted hours? Is that, is that, do I understand?
I'm not sure how that works with, I'm assuming the liquor license is tied to the actual hours you're allowed to serve.
Yeah, that's what I'm just trying to understand. I'm sympathetic to the business argument.
I, I think if, if the conditions were put on for the hours, then theoretically they could serve alcohol up to 11:00, and then have to bring it inside after that.
Right.
I think. I don't know if staff wants to, has anything to add.
Through, through you, Mr. Chair, the, whatever's in your decision as a condition, when they go to get their operating license, it will be in there, and then that will also, my understanding would be filtered to the liquor license. However, if you were to ask for a special permit, they would probably still be eligible for that.
So similarly, then, Chair, I just wonder about the, so the music restriction would, ambient music would not be allowed at all, or up until 11 o'clock?
No, it says no music, artificial or amplified sounds shall be played...
At all.
...checked in the patio area. Yep. I mean, I don't think we have any means of controlling...
No, I know.
...volume, or, you know, whether it's kind of melodic.
Yeah.
Really tranquil.
Can you hold it to level five?
Yeah, exactly. That's the problem.
Yeah.
Those are my thoughts. Not sure if anyone has anything to add.
I believe the recommendations of staff report should apply. And my own thought, honestly, is that, is that the size of the patio with those restrictions in place could be all right. Although I would prefer to see the patio remain as is, or, you know, we could permit it at 45 meter squared, for example, but...
But that would be a change in variance, I don't think we should do that.
Yeah, okay.
I'm, again, I'm sympathetic to the argument that Kensington, as a, as a community, kind of is supported by independent small businesses, cafes, bars, and restaurants and the like. And, you know, part of its charm is the fact that it does actually have these kinds of businesses within it, and this is why people want to visit there, and frankly, why many people want to live there. So I'm, I'm inclined to try to be as supportive as possible to this, but I do acknowledge the sound issues.
Yeah, I, I think this is a challenging one as well. I, I agree with Ms. Omen's comment about the size of, the increase in size potentially being fine, but relying then on city planning's recommendations about time restrictions.
Okay, then. Are we ready for a motion?
Sure, I'd move a motion to allow variance one to increase the size of the patio, subject to the conditions of the city planning outlined.
So we have a motion to approve from Mr. Reed. Planning recommendations to apply. Is there a second?
So the one, two, and three.
One, two, and three. Planning recommendations to apply from the October 3rd staff report.
The conditions.
The, the conditions, the conditions regarding opening hours, music, and the one-story building on the adjacent property to the east.
I'll, I'll second that.
Second by Ms. Omen. All in favor? Those opposed?
I was in favor, Chair, sorry.
Sir, you have your approval. Thank you very much.
For the consideration.
Thank you. With those conditions, we move to application number 9, 9 Kings College Road. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Just before you begin.
Yep.
The committee has before it on this application, copy of plan of survey, site plans, floor plans, and elevations. May I ask you to state your name and address, please?
Yes, so my name is Karen Lee. I'm here as an agent for, on behalf of University of Toronto, and the address of the application is 150 College Street, Ortens, Kangs College Road.
Okay. On this one, would we like to go straight to questions?
I think so.
Go straight to questions, yes. We don't, don't need a presentation, thank you. Purpose of the application is to legalize and to maintain a one-story addition, a research lab on the rooftop of the existing three-story university building. Questions, please.
Mr. Chairman, I think this is very straightforward. So if there are no questions, this absolutely has no impact on anything surrounding it, so I would be prepared to move approval as it meets the orders.
Thank you very much. So a motion to approve by Ms. Omen, is there a second? Second by Mr. Clay. All those in favor? Your application is approved.
Thank you so much.
And moving on to application number 10, 363 Crawford.
What you looking for?
Here it is.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. My name is Gabriel Frazan of Moreto Design, and I'm the agent for 363 Crawford Street.
Sorry, just a question. Actually, do you still have opposition here?
No, they just were inquiring about our position.
Okay.
They were concerned about being a multifamily...
Okay, so there's nobody speaking?
There's nobody here for opposition.
I'm sorry, this room was held down, that's why I was, yes.
So they just had some questions, and we were able to appease their concerns.
Okay, great.
This application, I did say would be held down, but that being the case, and my not being able to find my list for a moment, please carry on.
Okay. We are proposing a new partial two-story addition, rear addition, a full third story to the property, a new, a new third-story, small, basically bay window to the front, and new front concrete porch, and a walkout in the front, and a rear deck. So...
Thank you.
We have 11 variances, and if you have any...
We don't need to run through them all, I don't think, but there may be some questions from committee panel members for you. Questions for the applicant?
Can I just ask, so just looking at variance number five in terms of F S I?
Yes.
What's, do you have any sense of what the current F S I is?
The current F S I is 186 square meters.
So it'd be somewhere around point seven, seven...
Point seven, 71%, right.
It's good math.
It's, it's on the site plan.
It's on the site plan.
Yes.
Okay. The height issue, the height obviously stands out. Could you comment on why the committee should consider a height of 10.18 minor?
The height of the house existing is not much higher at the moment. The neighbors on both sides are slightly higher, sorry, on the south side. The, it is, the height of the, of the property is not inconsistent with some of the new recently approved projects in the neighborhood. We're also setting the front of the house back, or tilting it back, so that it doesn't come right out to street level. So the, the front of the house is more of a, sort of a Georgian Victorian look, a Georgian look, and I think complements the street really well. And there are approvals, previous approvals on the street with that particular height and higher as well.
The house you just mentioned, two doors down, it looks very similar. Is that, are we talking about the same one?
Yes, very similar in height, and they've added a third story addition as well. So it is, it's not something that we're unique to the city and to the...
And it looks like you have support from both of the adjacent homeowners?
We have support from nine, nine people, yes, and adjacent as well. So we're, we're trying to work with the department. I know we did work with the planning department about, they requested it from our original position, and we were able to accommodate this wing in the planning department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions? I'll ask then for a motion from committee.
I'd put forward a motion to approve it, given that it seems there are a lot of similar types of buildings recently, and, and older ones as well in the neighborhood, and it has strong neighborhood support. So I don't think it's, I think the changes are relatively minor.
Thank you.
Motion to approve by Mr. Reed, is there a second?
Sure.
Second by Mr. Clay, all those in favor?
Thank you very much.
I've got your approval, sir, thank you. And returning to the agenda, number 11, 801 Dundas West. On this application, we have before us simply a copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. Good morning, would you state your name and address, please?
Jonathan Shaw, 3281 Wilmar Crescent.
Will you both be speaking?
I don't think we need to...
Just if I have to answer any questions.
Carry on then. I'll just ask committee members whether we think we need a presentation, or can we move, we don't think so, no.
I have one question. Yes, I'd just like to know whether you still have to get approval from the ministry for childcare spaces, or to license to get...
Yeah, yeah, this is one of the things we have to upload, and they will approve it if this is, you know...
You still have to...
Yeah, we still have to go through all the...
You will be licensed, childcare.
Yes, licensed, sure.
Okay, thank you.
The parking condition is existing. Like, there's nowhere for you to put a spot, is that...
Yeah, correct.
Basically, it's, so you're just looking to approve an existing condition in conjunction with the rest of your applications?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, I'm so sorry, then I got mixed up. I thought you have to, you're applying to convert it to a childcare space.
Well, but there's no variance for the use, it's only for the parking. So the use is permitted?
Oh, okay.
Again, the use is changing, but it is a permitted use.
It's permitted use, I see, okay.
Yeah, if it weren't, there would be a variance for the use.
Yeah, so they only have, but I thought there was, so if the operation means it's already licensed, so...
No, no, we're trying to get a change of use to become a licensed daycare.
You see, that's, that's my point. Okay, you clarified it, thank you very much.
All right, then. I'll ask for a motion if there are no further questions.
Happy to move, Chair, that we support this application.
Motion to approve by Mr. Clay, is there a second? Second by Mr. Reed, all those in favor? Application is approved.
Good luck.
Thank you. And we move to application number 12, 71 Ravina. On this application, committee has before it copy of plan of survey, site plans, floor plans, and 22 form letters of support, including letters from the properties on both sides of the subject property. Good morning.
Morning.
Would you state your name and address, please?
My name is Adam Brander, my address is 49 Bolton Avenue in Toronto.
Thank you. All right. And on your application, do we wish a presentation on this?
No.
No, we can go right to questions then, please.
No questions.
I just wanted to ask about the garage. Does the garage, is there any intention, or does the garage already have plumbing or electrical connections?
There's no existing garage, and it's not proposed to have plumbing.
Very good, okay.
Just electrical for lighting.
Why is there now?
There's two parking spaces.
Two parking spaces. Very good, thank you. Can we go to a motion, please?
I'd put forward a motion. It seems to be completely reasonable, and there's a bunch of other garages in the area, and the variances thought are, are minor, so I'd put forward a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Reed.
I would second it.
Second by Ms. Chang, all those in favor? You have your approval, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. We move on to, number 13 is held, we move on to application 14, 826, 834 Young Street, and 228 Cumberland Street.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. My name is Patrick Devine. I'm the solicitor for the applicant. I have with me Kevin McEwan, who's with Great Gulf for the owners and developers of the property.
Good morning. Just a moment, please, because I do want to make known to everyone that the committee has before it on this application, copy plan of survey, site plans, covering letter from Patrick Devine, dated 27 May, parking assessment from transport analyst, L A Consulting, site-specific bylaws, 504 2018, 505 2018, and a request for... analyst, L.A. Consulting, site-specific bylaws, 504-2018, 505-2018, and a request for relief from the bylaw, of site-specific bylaws specifically 504-82018 and 505-2018. Okay, now on this one, does committee wish to hear a presentation?
No.
Let's go to questions then, straight away.
I have one question. Oh, just the, you're seeking to increase the GFA by about 740 square meter and decrease the parking, a number of parkings?
The GFA is just a conversion, sorry. The GFA is a conversion of space previously shown as non-residential to residential. So the overall GFA does not increase. And in terms of the parking, I do want to show you...
Upside down.
No. Now, in case you didn't know where Young and Blue was, this is the location of the property. And on the screen, you will see a chart that sets out other projects in the downtown area, and you'll notice the last two ones, 771 Young and 2720 in Yorkville, those are in immediate vicinity to this property, so that city staff has reviewed this and has determined that the ratio proposed, .16, is the appropriate ratio for the parking.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Are we in committee, or are we still asking questions?
No, I think, no, still asking questions, sorry about that, please carry on.
I, just to confirm, council gave direction to bring this forward to committee.
That's correct.
Because of the, I don't want to read the whole thing, but because of the smart communities and whatnot. So basically, this kind of has a stamp of approval of, more or less from staff, but for you to move forward, I haven't seen any objections that I'm aware of.
Just to clarify, as you know, there's the two-year moratorium on applying to the committee after you have received approval for a site-specific bylaw, unless council approves a resolution allowing the application to come forward. Council later introduced that motion, it was adopted by council, so that's why it's before you today. So it's correct that indirectly there's been an endorsement, but the matter is still in your hands to make the decision.
No, I understand that, but I think, given the fact that council, you know, thought it a good idea to get this moving, which suggests to me that they are more or less not unhappy with proposing.
I think you're correct in that assumption, yeah.
And I think that it's not changing anything to the exterior, and there's lots of TTC access and downtown amenities. I think that's probably why they felt it appropriate to move it forward.
I think so.
And just to my own benefit, is from the council's intention, because they're moving it in a very fast speed, what is the urgency of it? They said that's urgent.
Well, the urgency is the fact that if you're eliminating parking, you know, there's excavation going on now. If you're eliminating parking, you have to know sooner than later if you're doing that, so that was what the urgency was.
In the sense, it's a construction issue.
That's right, construction, construction reason.
We went to committee now on this application, yes.
Okay, then...
We're in committee now.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, if my colleagues don't have any questions, I would be prepared to move approval, approval of the application, as I feel that the variances requested are minor. In terms of the reduced parking, as I mentioned before, there's TTC access. In terms of adding units, there's a lot of amenities in the area, so I think that this proposal is appropriate, and there is no negative impact to surrounding areas, and it meets the four tests.
I would just, I buttress that, just by, again, I just noticed the number of bike parking spaces is just quite substantial and, and good.
Right, thank you.
For that area. I mean, we're going to deal with parking spots that we need to make sure that we have an offsetting number of alternatives. I think it's great.
Are you seconding them?
Yes. My extension, I'll second them.
Any further comments by members? We could go to a motion then, please.
So that was my motion, so all in favor?
Motion to approve then by Ms. Omen, second by Mr. Clay, all those in favor? Thank you, have your approval, thank you. And committee moves on to application number 15, 943-945 Dundas Street West. On this application, the committee has before it, copy plan of survey, site plan, and a staff report from Urban Forestry dated 3rd of October. Good morning again.
Morning again.
Ask you to state your name and address, please.
Yes, Edward Lee, I'm the applicant, 6 Argyle Street, Toronto.
Thank you. All right. On this application, committee, do we care for a presentation? Don't think we need one. All right then, we can go straight to questions of the applicant.
I just wondered, there's a garage at the back, I think, is that used for storage, or what is it used for?
It's for parking, storage at the moment. The owner might consider an application for laneway housing in the future, but it's nothing that's on the radar at the moment.
And is 941 the actual church office?
Yes, on the other side of the laneway.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Currently, now, what's, what it's used for?
So it's two residential semi-detached dwellings, the owner owns both sides, and the application to convert it to mixed CR is the result of, we're essentially going from two skinny semis, and we're going to stack them, so that becomes a duplex. And there was a home occupation area at the front, which was permitted under just residential, but the applicant wanted to see about having it recognized as a mixed-use commercial office space. So thanks to the pre-circulation opportunity, I was able to have those conversations with the planner, and pleasantly surprised that they didn't have any objections to this. It's an unusual little stretch of Dundas where it was zoned residential, but there are lots of home offices and small, those types of third-party office spaces that are not associated with the dwelling units. So I'm guessing that because of that precedent, they saw no concerns with this application.
Thank you. Okay, I think we can. We can send the committee now then?
I do notice it's at the foot of Gray Street, right?
Yes.
Which I can imagine would be a tough place to have a residential on the floor.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Yes, I agree. I've been on the site, and then it is changing, where everything started to change to more like commercial use. I would like to, then, is there's no question, I'd like to move a motion to approve the proposal.
Great. Motion to approve.
And with the forestry condition number one.
Forestry condition number one.
Yes.
Motion to approve, Ms. Cheng, is there a second? Second by Mr. Reed, all those in favor?
Great, thank you very much.
You have your approval, thank you. And we move to application number 16, 38 St. Andrews Gardens. On this, the committee has before it, copy plan of survey and site plans, and correspondence from the assistant planner at Heritage Preservation Services, and a staff report from Heritage Preservation Services with heritage standard condition. So, good morning to you, would you state your name and address, please?
Morning, my name is Bruno Lopes, and my address is 1649 St. Clair Avenue West.
Thank you very much. On this, can we go straight to questions, members? Okay, we'll go straight to questions of the applicant.
I think, Mr. Chairman, this is very minor, I'm not sure there's any questions. Can we go into committee?
We can go into committee on this one now then.
Okay, through you, Mr. Chairman, they're just filling in a small piece on the side, so I would be prepared to move approval, including the conditions in the October 3rd heritage report. That's my motion, as I feel it meets the four tests.
So motion to approve the application with the condition of the heritage report, is there a second for that motion? By Ms. Omen, is there a second? Second by Mr. Clay, all those in favor? You have your approval, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Committee moves on to 385 Carlton Street, number 17. And on this application, we have before us, copy plan of survey and site plan, four photographs of the current and proposed front elevation, entry stairs, and basement entrance, and email correspondence from City Planning dated 10 June, and 10 July from Heritage Preservation Services dated 3 June, and a site report from the manager of Heritage Preservation dated 2 October. In support, we have two letters of either support or no opposition. Good morning. May I ask you, please, to state your name and address?
My name is Patricia Milne of Milne Architect, 342 George Street East, I'm the agent for the owners.
Thank you very much. On this application, members, care for a presentation? I don't think so, okay then. Please, go right to questions then.
So this looks like it, you're just, you're changing the facade to kind of be similar to the other houses in that little strip?
Exactly, there used to be a porch on the house years ago, and there's a non-conforming, quite dangerous entry stairs, set of stairs to both up and below now, so we're just going to match exactly, both in style and footprint, the porches that are next door.
Your number six variance stands out as being, as being noteworthy, you're looking for a depth of 19.27, where 14 meters are permitted, could you comment on why the need for that, please?
The existing house, that's set by the existing house, we're only coming out 600 millimeters beyond that, which is what the adjacent porch comes out, so we cannot conform to the existing house.
All right, thanks, so the 19.27 is almost the existing condition minus .6 of a meter. Any further questions then, now we can move to a motion, please?
Yeah, I'd move a motion for approval, given that the works are all quite minor, and especially getting support in maybe a difficult neighborhood to get supported, you have that, so I would, I would recommend approval.
I'll second that with the heritage condition, that's in the October 1st report.
So motion to approve by Mr. Reed, seconded by Ms. Omen with the heritage condition, all those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Have your approval. And committee moves to application 18-2 Weatherall Street. On this application, we have before us, email correspondence from the Transportation Services and Urban Forestry, and staff reports from Planning, and a staff report from Transportation Services. Good morning.
Good morning, my name is Gabriel Guiducci, I'm the agent for, to Weatherall.
Your address, please.
Yes. My address, 269 St. John's Road.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, just a moment, and... I'll ask committee members whether we'd like a presentation on this, on this, would that help us?
I would like to ask you a question, where are you, where are you at with the permit stage with transportation? Because we have a refusal report from Planning that I'm assuming you've seen?
Yes.
To refuse variance three under the new and one under the old bylaw. But then Transportation is saying you're going through a permit process, so are you close to getting it, or do you, where are you at with that?
So we don't know how close we are from getting it. There seems to be a fairly positive reaction from Transportation for us to get it, as a matter of fact, they are approving with conditions on their end. Planning unfortunately was submitted to our file on the 7th, so a couple days ago. I made a couple attempts to get an understanding on these variances and why the refusal. Eventually, I cleared up my mind by doing some more research about how that reads, is that there would not be these variances attached to our file if there is no transportation approval. So ultimately, we are in the conditions with Transportation, no matter how we look at it. Now, what we ran into an issue on our end, which I managed to discuss with the zoning examiner of our file, that in order for us to move with the application without these two variances, we have to provide a parking somewhere.
And...
And that would be provided at the rear.
Right.
Not as existing, the garage will still be demolished, but we will be showing a parking pad. And with my conversation with planning examiner, that would be sufficient for us to move on with the rest of the variances and construction.
So would you be removing variances today, then?
We have to, and we will.
Can you tell us which ones you're going to remove today?
So the variances are going to be removed as per planning report.
So as per the notice?
Yes, would be variance...
Not the zoning?
Correct, it would be variance three of the bylaw 569-2013.
Okay.
Variance one related to the bylaw 438-86.
Okay.
Very good, okay, thank you. Okay, well, that clarifies things quite a bit then, thank you.
Letter supports it all?
I think we're fine on those, thank you.
They were filed a little late, I just brought a copy, but they're in the file.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll take this into committee now.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, with those variances removed, I think that that kind of alleviates the concerns that all of us had.
Yes.
As far as the, the other variances, I think that they are, are minor and appropriate for this area. I would move approval of the application, and I think that's it, there's, as amended, yes, sorry, so approval of the application as amended, removing variance number three under 569-2013, and removing variance number one under 438-86, and there are no other conditions, because the transportation is just an information report. So that's my motion.
Thank you, so motion to approve as amended, removing both of the variances that relate to parking by Ms. Omen, is there a second for that motion? Second by Mr. Reed, thank you. All those in favor? You have your approval, sir?
Thank you.
Thank you. And committee moves to 100 Niagara Street, number 19. And on this application, we have before us, email correspondence from Community Planning, and one letter of support, one letter in opposition. Good morning, may I ask you to state your name and address, please?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, my name is Lee Clark of 219 Fort York Boulevard, I am the agent on behalf of our applicant. I haven't been informed about the letter of opposition, so I do apologize, I haven't heard or seen what that opposition is.
Okay, I'm just going to check with my panel members here, just to see if anyone has that.
The letter of opposition, it's, it's short, let me see if I can condense it. Basically, it's from number 137 Niagara Street, they don't feel this, what you're proposing fits into the neighborhood, they feel it's going to add to extreme congestion and noise that they're experiencing now, and the proximity is too close to existing homes, and that the commercial use does not fit into the small community we have, the building should no longer have commercial status, they feel that the rooftop is a source for noise of the immediately sounding surrounding homes, and then it doesn't meet the minimum setbacks for parking, height, et cetera. Here, I can give it to you if you want it, you have it now. So that's the opposition. And then we also had support from number 90. So I don't, I don't know, are we going to question?
I think we should allow the applicant to comment on that opposition.
Well, I mean, the only thing that is of true relevance there, as far as I can see, is the setback, because everything else, we meet the current bylaw standings, so we're not looking for a change of use, we're not asking for any height increases, and the building is totally conformant apart from the setbacks. And one of the biggest challenges we actually have with the building is that we have two times density permitted, it's very hard to achieve that because of the setbacks, so we'd actually have to go higher in nature than what our client actually would like to do in order to try and achieve even the two times density. And unfortunately, we've ended up with 2.35 because of the staircase enclosure to get up to the rooftop for service and for egress.
So you are zero setback on all four sides?
We are, it's an existing structure, zero setback right now. The zoning bylaw does state a one-meter setback from the north, west, and south. The zoning bylaw does state a one meter setback from the north, west, and south elevations, and seven meters from the east. And as you can see from our documentation, the townhome development is five stories tall, which is our neighbor. The highest part of our building would be abutting that. We're not, we're not looking for any height increases. The thing that really appealed to the applicant about this build was its size, its structure, its nature, that we are keeping the facade treatment the same. It's going to be white masonry as it is right now. And also, we've pulled back the staircase enclosure from Tecumseh so that the second story is in line with the existing residential as well. If you look at photographs on page A, 7, 10, and 20, you can see the height of our immediate neighbors.
Put that up on the overhead for us, please.
So this is facing east from Tecumseh. It's an existing one-story partial raised area in the back there, all of which we're trying to look to maximize. The building in the back is, as I say, five stories. If you look at the...
Can I ask you something? To tell me, so is the existing concrete structure, is that, is that to be demolished? Or are you working with it?
We are retaining as much of it as possible. Unfortunately, what happened was we carried out a soil report and checked the existing footings, and the structural engineers have said that they're not suitable, so the building is actually unsafe, and we have a report on file to, to back that up as well.
So it's likely to be mostly new construction or almost?
It is, and I think we have to do that for, you know, safekeeping to the existing neighborhood at any hell. Yeah. Other than that, we would have simply been adding a lightweight structure to the existing building. It would have been a hell of a lot cheaper.
I saw an email from Planning that goes back to July that talks about that the proposed addition, that the staircase doesn't cover, like, windows of neighboring properties. Did you address that at all?
Yeah, we've had, and we've gone back and forth with Planning for quite a few months now, and from what I understand, everybody is very happy with what we've proposed. Right now, we've pulled the staircase away. As I say, it's abutting, the five-story building, it's away from the residential properties. You won't really be able to see it from grade. So I think the, the biggest concern is right now is dealing with the setbacks.
The, the neighbor who lives in the building that might be affected by most, north of it?
One third, one, north of it, you're right.
Yeah, so have they, have you talked with them?
Um, to be fair, we understand that it's a tenant's property. We haven't been able to speak to any owners. I'm not sure that is actually 137, but I may be correct, incorrect. I'm not sure which property they own.
Much farther away.
Yeah, no, I think the opposition is from further.
Yeah, it's quite, yeah, I, I, so we've had some notes put through the letterbox talking about parking. We're not asking for any parking increases. As I say, this, it's a designer studio, and unfortunately, the applicant is having to move home because the building they're currently in is being knocked down for new development.
And there's a mix of sort of residential and institutional already in that area, right?
Yeah, yeah. There's a much larger development going up across the road.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
No further questions, we'll take it into committee.
I'd move a motion to approve. I think, I commend that you're reusing an existing building in an area that is going through a lot of growth, and the concerns that were put forward by the one letter, I, I don't think are very well founded. I think it's a very mixed neighborhood with a complete diversity of uses, and I think this is sensitive redevelopment of a, of an already, you know, tight building on a lot, so I move to approve.
I would second the motion.
All right, the motion to approve the application by Mr. Reed, seconded by Ms. Cheng. All those in favor? You have your approval, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And we move to application number 20, which is 686 Ozzington. And on this application, before committee, we have copy plan of survey and site plan, decision number A024215TY affecting the property, and a staff report from Urban Forestry recommending forestry provision or condition number two. Good morning to you, sir. Would you state your name and address, please?
Good morning. I'm Mark Hicks, 45 Mill Street in Orangeville. I'm representing the applicant in this particular matter.
Thank you very much. Good morning. Okay. On this application, any committee members wishing a presentation, or would you care to go straight to questions?
I just, yeah, questions.
Questions, we'll go with the questions.
I noticed there was a previous CVA approval in 2015. Why was that not built? This looks like it's a little different. It looks like they're actually building more with less variances, unless I'm missing something. But maybe, can you just...
Yes, there was a previous, there was a previous architect working on the file back in 2015. He is retired, and so they've retained me. The conditions expired because the, the project was not executed. We didn't receive a permit for that. And we've scaled back the project considerably due to, due to financial reasons, and so there's no addition proposed on the north. There's no addition proposed on the east side. There's just a small addition on the, on the north side to provide a barrier-free elevator and to provide a covered stair that's now currently exterior to the building, and a barrier-free bathroom. So the project, if you compare that to the previous one, it's, it's quite a bit pared down from the original one. And all except for two requests from our variances are existing conditions with respect to parking and its proximity to park, the property lines and fences, et cetera.
Which two are not existing on the notice?
So number four, the maximum height, we've requested an increase from 10 meters permitted to 12.4. Right now, the building has a gable roof with a high ridge. Our new third floor roof line is, is flat, and it matches the peak of the existing roof, but because there's mechanical units, then we have to screen those. The parapet extends beyond that to screen the mechanical units. And item eight, the floor space index, due to the small addition, we've increased the index from .6 to .67.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
We just received a letter coming into the meeting from the counselor. You have it. Thank you. Very efficient.
Try.
There we are.
Okay, and any question?
All right, we'll take it into committee.
Yeah. No more question from my colleagues. I'd like to move to approve this application, and I, I think the variances are minor, and it, it is a good proposal. But I approve the forestry number two condition.
Right.
There is a, a motion then to approve by Ms. Cheng with forestry condition number two.
I'll second that.
Second by Ms. Omen. All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Your approval.
Thank you.
Okay, at this juncture, before we hear the contested applications, we're going to take a, a 10-minute break and then return to hear the contested applications. So 10-minute break, we'll resume at 16, 17 minutes past the hour. Thank you.
16? I vote, I vote.
Quarter after. Quarter after will be fine.
Okay.[1158.01]
We resume now.
Okay.
With the held applications, so we shall commence with application number three, thirty-six St. Paul Street. Good morning.
Good morning.
Just a moment, please.
Yes.
And those who are here and interested and who wish to speak to this application, can I ask them to identify themselves, please?
They've left.
They've left.
Oh, you got with them.
Okay. So apparently those who were here to speak in opposition have left. So we'll hear now from the applicant.
Thank you.
And we have on this application before us, copy plan of survey and site plans, and also email correspondence from city planning, urban forestry, heritage preservation services, a staff report from engineering, and correspondence in support from one person, correspondence in opposition from one person. So, there we are. And may I ask you, please, to state your name and address?
Julia Burke with Elevation Architects, nineteen sixty-seven Queen Street East.
Thank you very much. All right, on this application, well, do you...
Would you like a presentation?
Walk through, yeah. Walk through, a short presentation, please.
You can read along.
Yeah, you also submit something new.
Sorry?
You just submitted something new too, right?
Yes, yes, this is my argument. Lane houses are new territory to us, as I think they are to you as well. We worked closely with the city planners to ensure our variances were minor and our proposal appropriate to its parcel of land. St. Paul Street is located in Corktown, south of Queen, near Parliament. It's a vital neighborhood, full of co-ops and condos, townhouses, detached houses a stone's throw from the distillery. Our lane has houses and townhouses and two-story industrial buildings on deep lots either side of the lane. With our unusually wide property, we were able to accommodate living spaces and garage on the ground floor and two bedrooms on the second floor, the right size for a young family. The six variances required to accommodate our proposal include, number one, rear yard landscaping. It's quite onerous.
May I ask you, please, to put up the site plan on the overhead, just so we can not have one?
Let me find that.
We have one here.
Everything's gonna fall apart here.
But that's a help, thank you.
The lane house is the dark shaded.
Thank you very much, that helps. Sorry to interrupt you.
I've lost my groove. We're required to have eighty-five percent soft landscaping. It's difficult. Main houses are only required to have fifty percent soft landscaping. Our calculations gave us over, but I guess they've taken out perhaps the pavers out of that. At the planner's suggestion, we have included a green roof that brings our soft water penetrating landscape to over eighty-five percent, so we think that's a good accommodation. Number two, the bylaw asks that the setback to the lane be one point five meters or four foot ten on one side. Our existing rear yard fence is on the property line, a zero setback. The west side of the lane has very deep lots. Do you know the side I'm talking about, the lane side? I'm talking about this side right here. Right now, it's a zero setback with our fence. If you look at the front page, the picture at the front, our fence sits on that line. West side of the lane has very deep lots with open parking areas and generous setbacks to existing buildings on the lane. Our lane house will be one meter or three foot three back from the lane, with plenty of room to exit the garage. It's an interesting lane, it has openings on three sides. Number three, the angular plane. It's a forty-five degree angle projected towards the lane, starting at four meters above grade at a distance of seven point five meters or twenty-five feet from the rear wall of the main house. The majority of the rear wall of our main house is eleven meters or thirty-six feet from the main wall of the lane house. You see, the house, our house, has a small carbuncle on the north side that sticks out. That's twenty-five feet from our lane house, the rest is thirty-six feet from the lane house. Also, angular plane bylaw allows you to have a dormer that is thirty percent of the width of the front main wall of the lane house, the wall that faces the backyard. We exceed that amount by sixteen percent. Our dormer is thirteen feet wide, rather than the allowed eight feet, just enough room to accommodate the two exterior walls, a bathroom, a demising wall, and a laundry. And this dormer is thirty-six feet from the rear wall of the house. We feel that's reasonable accommodation as well, and a minor variance. Number four, our lane house is four inches above the height limit of six meters or twenty feet. Our house complies, but the metal profile for the green roof is four inches high, truly a minor condition. Number five, the encroaching canopy at the roof level is actually a small architectural feature, a picture frame projecting one point four inches from the face of the lane house. It's allowed at four meters above grade, but not at its higher level of six meters. Again, a minor accommodation. Number six, lastly, we require a variance for side yard setback at our south side yard. That's the entrance to the lane suite is on the south side. And the wall is one point zero seven meters or three foot six from the south property line, and our entry door is recessed in that wall to one point five meters, the what is allowed, four point four feet six inches from the property line. There's no requirement for fire-rated material at this distance. Also, three foot six is plenty of room to wheel a bike or a lawnmower from the lane to the rear yard, so we feel that was a suitable distance. In conclusion, our six variances are minor and a rational response to this particular property on this lane and in this neighborhood. Our lane house will be a good neighbor, a good rental suite, and a great addition to the variety of housing options in Corktown. There.
Thank you.
Good.
Questions to the applicant by panel members?
Sorry, the angular plane, you said it's measured four meters up?
Four meters up.
Are you using Urban Design Guidelines, or are you using the OP?
I'm using the bylaws available on the website for lane housing.
Okay.
The Toronto bylaw.
One question. You have the support of number fifty-four. Have you talked to number...
Yes, yes, we did. I received it this morning. It's on my phone.
Okay.
Yes, both north and south have given them their blessing.
Okay.
Yes.
Could you describe to us what the concerns were of the opposition that were...
Okay, so, I didn't know this, but they own, Bridgette and her husband, own a tiny little square of property on our north side. It's a parking pad right now. They're concerned about the two scraggly trees that are there, and they don't want to pay to have them removed. And we said, yes, of course, you won't be, you won't have that. No, no, we'll remove those trees with the due diligence of urban forestry. And a fence, what will, will we replace the existing fence? Yes, of course, we will. And then a concern about construction, which was a shoring issue, and of course, that will be dealt with during the permitting phase of our project.
No further questions for the applicant, then I'll look to panel for a motion, please.
I'd move a motion for approval. I think the variances are minor, and it's a sensitively designed house. I think the angular plane issue is going to arise in these situations.
Just about everyone.
You've addressed how that's managed. And I think the green roof, putting in the green roof to gain your, increase your soft landscaping is commendable, so I move to approve.
Some conditions...
Oh, sorry, with, yeah, urban forestry condition number three.
Right.
And two? Okay, excuse me, two, and the engineering conditions from the May twenty-third letter.
Very good, okay. Motion to approve by Mr. Reed with those conditions. Is there a second to that motion?
I was seconded.
Second by Ms. Chang.
Yeah.
All those in favor? Your application is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our attention turns now to the only other held-down application, which is number thirteen, two oh six Hiawatha Road. So I'll ask the applicant to come forward, and if there's anyone here in opposition, if there is, may I ask you, please, to go up here and have a seat in these chairs along the front desk to my, to my left, please. Now, on this application, committee has before it, copy of site, of survey site plan, a party wall agreement between two oh six Hiawatha and two oh four Hiawatha, dating from May.
Thank you.
We have a staff report from community planning, and we have correspondence from four people, all in opposition to the proposal. So, good morning, sir, I'll ask you to state your name and address, please.
Good morning. My name is Darko Dunat, and I'm agent for the owners of two oh six Hiawatha Road, so here is, here to defend our proposal.
Okay, would you like to make a presentation?
Yeah, first of all, I would like to say that we had three of the opponents who submitted letters were here. We had a discussion, and I think we came to the agreement, and I would like opponent's representative to start with that. I think it is the best way.
Are you making changes to the variances?
We are. From pitch roof, we are going to flat roof.
Can you go through the notice and tell us what you're changing?
Number one, and number two are talking about height of the building.
Let's do one at a time, then, so variance number one?
It's talking about front and back wall, and variance number two is talking about sidewall.
Let's do them one at a time, because I want, we want to understand your changes very, very clearly.
Okay.
So variance number one is being changed, how will it read now?
So, okay, because we have pitch roof, front and back walls are lower than sidewall, which goes all the way to the, to the top of the pitch, and that's variation, so now we are, we will be giving that up and making flat roof on top, which means all three walls will be same height.
So what's the variance change to...
So the variance right now reads that you're asking for a main wall height of eight point one nine meters. Do you know what the new measurement precisely will be?
Let's put it at eight twenty-five, because...
Is it gonna be higher?
It's gonna be higher, we can't, we can't, we can't make the...
No, now it's pitch roof, so just because we are putting flat roof, the projection will be a little higher, that's why I'm saying from eight nineteen to eight twenty-five.
Okay.
Okay, sir, I'm concerned here that what we may have to do with your application is to defer it. Let me ask you...
No, no, if that's the case, then go with eight nineteen, we'll accommodate it.
Excuse me. How many of the variances are you intent upon changing here on the floor?
Just that one.
Just the one variance?
Just two variances, number one and number two.
Okay, well then, so we're gonna...
If you look at the picture at the projector, you'll see that front and back wall are eight point nineteen, but sidewall is nine seventy-eight. So instead of that, we are going to make flat roof, and that flat roof will be at eight point nineteen.
So you're gonna leave it alone, then? You're leaving number one alone, it's gonna read eight point one nine?
Yes.
Okay. Let's go on to what you intend to do with number two.
Number two, because we are making flat roof, it will be also eight point one nine.
Okay, so you're revising that.
Reducing it, so it's gonna be eight point one nine, and those are the only changes you wish to make to the variances?
Those are the only changes.
I think we can deal with that, there's really, there's only one change, then, one variance being changed.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you wish to continue with your presentation? Are there other things that you'd like us to understand about, about the project?
Sure.
You don't have to go over each variance, if they're small, just the ones that stand out.
So variance number three is basically about floor spacing, oh no, side, side light setback?
No, no, it is floor space index, you're right.
It's floor space.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I was reading it right. Yeah, floor space index, this was depleted house, and the new owners had quite expenses to bring it to the state, not to fell down, not to mention to make something out of it, so they naturally wants to maximize the floor area, so they will have something nice or recover their expenses once they sell it. So because of the dear states of the house, how it was, and our proposal is maximized to bring it to, and also, new standard of living is requiring something bigger than what was there, and to support that, I have plenty of examples around, and you supplied with that map where dark dots are representing these houses, and you have pictures for the dark...
Do you want to put that on the overhead for us, do you have it with you?
Actually, I gave out all of that, and I believe...
Okay, thank you, okay. I have, I have, I'm looking at the...
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, can you just elaborate on these dark dots? Are you saying they have the same floor space index? Like, what is it that's...
These dark dots are followed by the pictures, and you'll see this, yeah, and you'll see three-story, three-story houses all along, and I believe those are exceeding space floor index by a lot, at least as much as we do. And then last page, you'll see one aerial photo where you can see that all two-story houses are coming very close to the, to the back property line, meaning that they are exceeding that floor space index. Majority of these houses are on that picture, and this is just one example of the neighborhood. So, in our opinion, what is granted to the others should be granted to the, to the owner of this house.
All right.
And then...
Sir, sorry, I think that's, the FSI was the one that stood out dramatically, in my view certainly, because it appears to be substantial, so thank you. I'd like to hear now from the...
And then there is another, and that it is side lot line setback, but this is existing, number three, and number four.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, number three, north side setback is, is existing is zero point seven, so we are not changing that, we're just getting along. And number three...
Interesting, okay.
And number three is talking about setback from the other part of the semi-touch house, and we have that party wall agreement, and I guess that's answered that question.
Okay, so sir, I'm gonna ask now to hear from those that are here to speak to the application.
Sure.
When they're finished, I'm gonna ask you to come back to respond to the particular things that they raise.
Okay.
So have a seat, please, and I'll ask those in opposition to come forward. They can have that staff, please.
My name's Craig...
Good morning, and state your name.
Hey, good morning, I'm Craig Morgan, I live at one one nine Wapple Avenue, which is the property facing the north sidewall of two oh six Hiawatha. There were four letters submitted to you guys. Three of the authors of those letters were here today, and we've met outside with the developer and the owner, and we've come to a compromise of the flat roof that he described you. If the flat roof is put in and they don't go to the pitch roof, then we're okay with the, we're okay with it. Now, we don't speak for the other people, the other one person who wrote a letter, we only speak for ourselves, the other two people, we only speak for the three of us.
You are in favor of what was discussed this morning, you're in agreement with it?
I'm in agreement with it, two oh four Hiawatha, the attached to two oh six is in agreement with it, and the property directly behind two oh six Hiawatha is in agreement with it as well.
Okay. And my concern now is that the set of drawings that's on file for this application does not show the flat roof, the new design, so there's an issue there that is of some concern, even though only one variance has been changed.
Can you ask for a markup, yeah? By way of word, yeah. To convert into a flat roof, we can move the motion with that description.
All right, okay, fine, okay. All right, then, so really, you're here to inform us that?
Yeah, I just...
What had, and a resolution was come to?
Yes, for the three of us, our properties.
Okay. Thank you very much for that.
Yep, thank you.
Much appreciated. All right, the... All right, the applicant to return to the podium, please. Okay, so...
Can I just, I have a question, we have a staff report, you've seen it?
Yeah, I've seen it.
Fying to elevation drawings, and they're specifying four drawings. Can you look at those and see, like, what you're proposing, the flat roof? Because we want, we don't want the massing to change, like, is there anything that you can change and initial and give to us on any of these drawings to reflect what you're changing?
Through you, Mr. Chair, maybe I can suggest some wording for a condition that takes that, and it would be through the last, the comment section on the planning staff report, something to the effect of the wall height should be limited to the extent of the three-story addition inclusive of the third-story step back, and then you can say, measured to the flat roof of the dwelling, or something to that, we can add the words in there to refer to a flat roof dwelling, and then not have it tied to the plans on file? Because you can't tie them to the plans if he's gonna be...
Yeah, unless you...
Unless you, or you can have the elevations doctored, and he can submit those as revised elevations today, if that makes you more comfortable.
I think he's doing that, maybe, let's see what he has, and we'll take your advice on it.
Do you have that wording done?
Sort of, part of it. Usually Anita fills in the blanks when we get there.
Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, would you mind repeating that wording that you just were drafting there?
Through you, you can either ask for the revised plans, and we'll change it, the word, we'll just change the plans that are referred to in the planning condition as to what was submitted today, or you could just word it and have it, the last paragraph under comments in the planning staff report, that the wall, the wall height be limited to the extent of the three-story addition inclusive of the third-story step back, and measured to the flat roof of the dwelling.
Very much.
Something like that.
Yeah. Mr. Dunat, are you able to reflect the changes on the plans there? Maybe I can ask, I'll let you... So we're looking at sheet number one, 11, sheet number one, 11, 13, and 12.
It's gonna be dated. Can I ask you to date, to date these changes?
Staff will date them, yeah.
Staff will date them, that's okay.
Sheet one, 11, 13, and 12.
So this one is important, that's better.
That sheet, sheet 12, okay, we need 13, 1, 11, 13, and 12. Mr. Dunat?
Yeah?
I need the adjustment on sheet one as well. I don't know if it's just a matter of changing the numbers, but if you can put it on there, and then you have 11, this is 12, so we need 11 and 13. So that one might be the number, that's 13 and 11, so you wanna check them? Well, it could be just a matter of reflecting the numbers, right, that you're changing the side exterior main walls to 8.19 meters, maybe just in the... Because they've mentioned sheet 11 and 1. No, 1, they've mentioned sheet one as well. It says, in accordance with the dimensions shown in drawing sheet one. I don't know, that's why, reading the report. It would be the, would be the height, right, 8.19, to change it from whatever, yeah, height, change the 9.78 to 8.19. Whatever you, yeah, 8.19.
That's right.
Yeah. Okay, so Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, then, to the condition, all we do is add the revisions made on the plans as submitted today, okay?
Very good, all right, thank you. We shall, we shall take this into committee now.
Well, I just want to say it's always nice when you're able to work some things out with the opposition, so thank you for that. And in looking at the neighborhood, also with what you've pointed out, I mean, there are a lot of similar sized homes, there are a lot of three-story additions, there are two-story homes across the street. So I, I think that this proposal does fit within the context of the neighborhood, and I would be inclined to approve the application as amended. If there are no other comments, I'll go ahead with my motion, is that okay? Okay, so through you, Mr. Chairman, I would move approval of the application for the reasons I just outlined, as amended, which is to revise variance number two under 5692013 to read 8.19 meters, and adding the condition in the October 3rd staff report, that the altered three-story dwelling shall be constructed substantially in accordance with sheet one, 11, 13, and 12, but that we add that those are the ones that we receive, the revised ones received by the committee today.
Very good. Motion to approve as amended by Ms. Omen. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Reed, all those in favor? Sir, you have your approval, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your understanding.
Thank you. At this stage, we have completed the agenda, and it's 11:44, this meeting is adjourned.